We believe that on our stand even so. Thank you, Father, for this opportunities to get it together. Thank you for men and women that's willing to pay the price of being a council. And, Father, for directing our town and our city. We're so thankful for, Lord, and we're so proud of our city. Thankful for what you've done in our lives and through the years. Thank you for this time, Lord, just when we could come together before your presence, ask for guidance and counsel and wisdom in the matters of this city, Lord. We give you praise and honor, Lord, for your do it in Jesus' precious name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Lord. All council members are present, and we have a quorum. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I might ask to change Agenda Item 4L. This Agenda item, I've asked council to consider a special council meeting next week on the 10th. When I put the agenda together on Friday, I wasn't quite sure I would be prepared to offer a candidate to council for their advice and consent on a chief of police. And I believe I am ready to do that this evening, so I'd ask that we change that to a discussion topic, discuss the appointment of a chief of police and obtain council's advice and consent. Additionally, I would request that we have an executive session for non-elected personnel prior to that decision. Additionally, Mr. Mayor, one other topic. Council, if you'll notice, I did, or actually staff placed an updated warrant ordinance number 1893. The number does not change, but please vote on the copy you've been provided rather than the one that's in the Agenda packet. One check was added to that. The only change to that was the last item on the second page. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Any other additions, deletions to the agenda? If not, then I entertain a motion to approve the agenda with the correction on Item 4L by administration.
Sub moving.
Second. To be moved and seconded. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. My report is this: There's been a lot of great things going on in the community Saturday and Sunday, the last two days. Some nice activity in town, Christmas, Santa Claus, and all that. We need to remember, all of us, of the good things that go on and not focus too much on the less-than-positive things. Be cognizant and aware of the less-than-positive things and how we can change that, but we also need to continue to celebrate our successes as where we're headed as a community. And I'm a firm believer we're headed in that right direction, and I thank the council administration and the community in general for sticking together through all this. Council member reports?
Just one thing. On the last council meeting, I left the room for a little bit. The business owner that came before the council with the mowing fees issue, I read in here that the city staff called the landowner before it ever came before the council, which rubbed me the wrong way. Doesn't make any difference because they voted that we're evidently going to continue penalizing without proof. There's no sense to measure or take pictures anymore that I can see, and if you protest it, you're pretty much guilty till proven innocent. And yet, you take that with citizens of Greensburg who also want to be paying twice for law enforcement, paying for services we don't use. And we even pay for the recreation of a few. I guess the city's still paying for the water bill at the golf course. I would be a little curious to how many council people and city staff are members or use that golf course. And then I was reminded here a while back that as a councilman, I took an oath to obey the laws of Greensburg. Forty-some-odd years ago, I took an oath to defend our freedoms and our rights and to oppose tyranny, terrorism. I can't do this anymore. I realize that somebody a lot brighter than me speaking can have a good rebuttal, but the short way'd be to ask the cameraman to edit these tapes of these proceedings. It's just got just a little bit too left for me. I'm not very good. I think the city, the citizens are wasting their money having me up here. I'm going to resign.
Rex, thanks for your service. I'll talk to you later, okay? In the midst of Councilman Brother's resignation, I just note in the minutes, we still do have a quorum, so we can proceed with the meeting tonight. Other council member reports?
I wouldn't say this is actually a report, but I would like for the city to acknowledge the Highland County United and Turquoise Ranch for the good work that they've done to clean up that building and make it look nice on the highway. I wish there was something that whether we send a thank you or put it in the paper, I don't care what we do, but I would like them to be aware that we are happy that they've done that and that it looks very nice. They've done a good job.
I concur. It looks great there on the highway.
Yeah, it does.
Head of council member reports? Administrator report, comments?
Just two items. Mr. Mayor, just advising council that tomorrow I'll be accompanying the mayor to Topeka to attend a meeting with Kansas Department of Transportation on Davis Park. And I'll have a report of what's discussed, follow-on council meeting. Also, I'll be away from the city in Dodge City Wednesday, Thursday, Friday for the Kansas Association of City Managers Conference. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Questions or comments for the city administrator? Again, I just thank all the community members that are here tonight and your active interest in what we're doing. Is there any comment from the public at this time before we go into the agenda items?
Mr. Mayor, I do have actually a question for the city administrator, not related to anything we've discussed so far, but I don't see it on the agenda, but you did get us a report, it seems, on the lead status of this building as far as what points were credited and what points are not credited. And just a couple of questions. Again, the report does indicate that currently it appears we're qualified for 32 points. Every point we've applied for, it appears we have been approved for. But two questions I have is, one, the report is dated from May of 2008, so it seems like BNIM should have made this aware. Again, this was news to me that we were this short when we were in Florida at the previous council meeting, but it seems like this has been known for quite some time that this building would not qualify for platinum status. Is that correct?
It would be my understanding that that's correct. And my, the information that I have leads me to believe that BNIM's probably known of the challenges to obtain that platinum status for quite some time. That's why there's been such a delay from completion of the building until now. What isn't said in there is that, and I think you have a valid point, what we've asked for, we've been granted as far as those points. And because it is an interim report, it's not a final, it wouldn't indicate what's been asked for and refused. That's why, in my opinion, based on reading that document, they're telling us how to improve that report without finally telling us we didn't get those points. But there are a lot of topics in there that need to be addressed, or they will be points attempted and points failed. And I will comment, Mr. Mayor and council, I did indicate that I was going to give you a presentation. I have provided the document with what the lead status is for certification. I don't feel I'm very qualified to give an in-depth report on why those points weren't granted, and I don't have anyone here in the city, I believe, that could answer why specifically a particular point is being addressed by the U.S. Green Building Council as far as what we're missing or what we're shy on. I'm anticipating some good close conversations with BNIM, with Mr. Hans Nettoblad and working with him. I hope we can obtain some of those points that USGBC is saying that we're weak on.
I guess at this point, I'm less concerned about the technical details of why we may or may not qualify for a point than I am about the apparent lack of communication we've had from BNIM regarding the status, lead status of this building.
And I'm also very concerned to see the actual, I know their side is going to say different than what we view the contract from square one of the $85,000 to assure that the points were there during the construction process is the way I understood the contracts to read when we signed those before construction ever started. And my rhetorical question simply is, where were they at monitoring those during the construction process to see that we achieved that because we paid them for it?
Just a thought process from my point of view.
Well, and there's a difference between being just lead certified as opposed to the platinum that we all thought we were designed to be getting, correct?
Significant difference.
But we were never led in that direction that it would only be just certified and that is it.
That's correct.
Like, Bob, we thought we were paying to get the higher standard.
Through the design-construction process?
Yes.
And at that point in time, the higher standard was consistent with the resolutions that the city had adopted regarding meeting the lead requirements for all their buildings. So you wouldn't have considered anything less than that. I mean, I don't think you would have.
And why were they sending us a bill for additional fees if they'd already had this submitted and a report back?
It's a difference of opinion on the way the original contract read, and I think I shared that information with council. BNIM hasn't said that they feel like they haven't been paid for any of that process other than the filing with USGBC. The dollar figure on that, I think, was, I think they were asking us for an additional $2,500 to take care of the filing with USGBC, where we had objected to them, telling them we believed, based on the verbiage in the contract, that that fee was already paid. They disagreed with that, but said that they would go forward with the filing anyway.
Well, had it already been filed, we have a report that dates back to May 5th of 2008.
Quite possibly.
Yeah, why is the date 2008?
I would hope that that's a clerical error.
Well, and come to think of it, the building wasn't even close to done in May 2008.
Yes, Mr. Councilman.
So that may have just been the date the project was submitted to, just registered with lead, never mind any of the actual paperwork to get our certification.
So you think they were just looking at the drawings to give us this, these points?
About had to have been, didn't it?
Well, they don't give you points off of drawings. It's a lot of...
But would they not give you points off your drawing where if you know you needed to change some things to achieve a higher level if you wanted it?
I was, well, just from my experience, typically that is the judgment of the architect. They will decide what features of the building will qualify for points, what won't, and basically lead will just look after the building is already constructed. During the process of construction, you will accumulate quite a bit of paperwork, documentation that the materials you're using, you know, your elimination of waste, you know, recycling excess materials instead of trashing them. You just document all that in a large volume, and then you submit that to lead, they look at that, and that's when they decide whether you qualify for points or not. So I wouldn't think, if this is actual, the USGBC's initial take, this is going to be based on the documentation compiled by Orr and/or BNIM based on the actual construction. So I would think that this report would probably have to be relatively recent, at least since the building opened.
Well, if you look under some of each individual item, like water reduction, it was updated on 10/5/12. So the original report might be the registration, I don't know, of the project.
It does say up in the upper right-hand corner by the date, "Design Application," which is...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But the bottom line for me simply is, I think the intent of the council administration was just going to have a lead-platinum building for the money we were spending. And to me, there's been a lack of oversight by the architect to make sure that that happened. That's all I'll say.
When I have an opportunity to work with Mr. Nettoblad, again, I'm going to offer that we work with Mr. Kenny Orr with Orr Construction, who's informed me that he's already submitted documentation. I can re-contact Mr. Orr in the hopes that there's some of the documentation that he retains that could help us with our lead-platinum certification. But as far away as we are from platinum, at this point, I'm not sure we can hold out a great hope for a platinum certification. So at some point, council may want to examine other avenues of addressing a shortcoming from BNIM.
Any other comments before we move on? Council consent agenda, the minutes of the November 19th, 2012 meeting, and appropriations ordinance 1893 in front of you and in your packet for your consideration.
I would move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second. To be moved and seconded. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. As we start into the business items, council, as you're aware, we had a public hearing back on 7/2 of 12 on property at 308 South Sycamore, and after that public hearing, we had discussion with the property owner of extending that for more information, and again on 10/1, and we extended that, and now the city administrator, I'll turn it over to you. You have visited with the property owners?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Council, I had the opportunity to contact Ms. Tanya Butler and it re-informed her that we were getting close to needing to re-address this in front of council because of the 60 days having run its course. I think originally I was thinking it was going to be farther out, and Ms. Butler told me the same thing, but I reminded her about the dates, and she's been working with me on attempting to move this process forward. I asked Ms. Butler to confirm with us this evening about what their intent is to help us close out this abatement process. Council, I have a letter from Ms. Butler dated November 29th in which she's offering to have the council consider purchasing the property. Prior to continuing any other discussion on this abatement process, I would ask that we have approximately 10 minutes for attorney-client privilege dealing with land acquisition issues.
Executive session.
I've moved we go to executive session until 6:30 for attorney-client privilege.
Second. To be moved and seconded. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, we're back in open session. Thank you for your patience, audience.
I would make a motion that we instruct the city administrator to visit with the Butlers and bring us back information for the next meeting.
To be moved and seconded. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ed will be in touch with Tanya.
Okay.
Here he goes. Good enough. Hey, thanks for coming, guys. Hey, you're welcome to stay.
I will get things to do. Been eating all morning.
I understand. See you, guys. Thanks for coming. Okay, I don't see Rhonda here. Ed, would you like to address the Item B, Employee Health Benefit Package for next year?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'll do my best. The information sheet that was provided in the packet breaks out some possible scenarios in which we have some discussion points here on how to handle an increase, a projected increase for insurance for this next year. With the projected increase, to use some of these examples, on the first column where it says, "Single Renewal Option Number One retains what the city has currently agreed to pay to assist employees with their various health insurance coverage plans." We're currently paying in the 300, 600, 800 range, reading across from left to right for renewal option number one. That column, if you'll see the numbers with the plus symbol out to the right of each one of those numbers, indicates a projected increase of the varying amounts there per the employee coverage plan. To go down from there, if we would decide that we could increase the city's contribution on that, for example, the renewal option A on the single column saying that the city would agree to increase our assistance to the employee's health coverage plan by $25 reduces the amount that the employee has to pay to $5,392, and so on across the columns. Down to the single coverage renewal option C, for example, and these options merely, the main difference between these options is whether we would agree as a city to retain the 300 coverage or whether we would want to split part of that increase with the employee or increase it $50 a month to where the employee would pay the $2,892 in that first column. Council, Ms. Pam and I have looked at the 2013 budget, and in essence, what this means per employee is, for example, on the single coverage would be a $600 increase, and it kind of has to be broken out and examined per category. For example, in the general, in the general fund category, only certain employees are taken out of there. For example, maybe Ms. Pam's health insurance or Ms. Christie. Over to the electric fund where Mick's insurance in his health coverage plan comes out of there, but in each one of those categories that Ms. Pam and I have examined, we have the funding to be able to increase those at some of those larger categories for assistance to the employees. There is a challenge inherent in this program. For example, that bottom right-hand column in assisting an employee with complete family coverage, that's a significant amount of coverage to go from 800 to 1,000. We only have, I believe, at this time, one employee who's doing that, but if all employees were to run out, get married, and have a family, then our contribution would grow astronomically. As it sits today, to increase each one of these coverage plans to assist the employees to cover something that we didn't anticipate such a large increase, the employees wouldn't be taking such a large bite out of their paycheck in order to have the health insurance coverage. Merely as suggested as a talking point, we can afford it in 2013. We can afford it in 2013, whereas it makes a significant decrease, significant decrease in the spendable income per employee if we ask them to cover the entire amount.
I think, again, we help split the cost of health insurance for our employees. I think it's only fair that we help split the cost of any rate increase. So I'd be in favor of moving towards one of the rule options, A, B, or C. B, it's a nice middle ground.
I was wondering, do any of these increase their out-of-pocket pay for anything for...
Like deductibles and things like that? I believe that all remains the same.
Does it? Okay, okay. Sometimes when you have an increase like that, they increase your deductible to where you can't hardly afford it either.
I will say, in addition to this, that there is an increase...
Is it high anyway?
Yes.
Oh, is it?
Yes.
$2,500.
Oh, okay.
Pam and I have, primarily Ms. Pam, has examined several different avenues to try to get these rates down, you know, looking at maybe going in with Kansas Municipal Utilities or calling other cities and finding out why their rates are cheaper. We, and the answer to that primarily is the small size of our employee pool and the age of our employees is such that we have these high rates. And I shared with Ms. Pam, please call Sterling. I mean, somehow they're paying 100% of their employees' insurance. We can't get into that kind of pool based on the size of our group of employees and the aggregate age or the average age.
Isn't that discrimination?
I'm sorry?
Isn't that discrimination? Age discrimination, don't you think?
Maybe, probably not in the insurance industry. Our insurance, our life insurance, I asked Ms. Pam about this today to at least be able to share it with you, roughly $10 per employee per month increase. Dental, roughly 50 cents, so very, very minimal increase on both of those.
Well, I can't see asking our employees to have to pay out of pocket, but what you're looking at in option one, so I, yeah, I'm definitely in favor of us increasing what we're paying towards their insurance.
Did I hear you? Let's clarify this. If we go to renewal option C, all but the last column on the right, we would drop to renewal option B, the 900, is that what I heard?
I think Ms. Pam and I discussing that feel that that's a more equitable increase per employee instead of one having such a large increase. And the secondary reason I had mentioned earlier, if we increase that to 1,000, we have the potential to have to increase anyone who, and this may never happen, but if an employee were to marry a spouse who had a family and they wanted this kind of coverage, then we would be obligated to offer them the same kind of coverage over in that right-hand column that any other employee would rate. At this time, there is only one employee in that right-hand column. Points to roughly a $1,200 increase a year.
I guess I would think that we would be best if we went with option B also, but I, except for, now, you're looking at everything on option C except for that last lot. Is that what you're saying?
Well, that's what I'm saying, but putting some more thought into that, I'm not sure. I'd have to ask Ms. Rhonda if we can do that, whether we're across the board, we have to have an option. I didn't think about that until now, Mr. Mayor.
Does this need action on this tonight? In other words, I think I hear some questions here that might need answered of what exactly the plan could or couldn't be.
Right, and I'm very, very happy to hear that council is supporting... Right, and I'm very, very happy to hear that council is supporting increasing this to assist our employees. The primary question I have to pose to Ms. Rhonda is, could we as a city do that for all the coverage, increasing it to C except for that family, and then have that remain at B?
I guess from a citizen's point of view, I should walk down there and say this, but I would like to know from Rhonda, why is ours increasing? Why is healthcare increasing? Is it just the cost, or is it Affordable Healthcare Act that health insurance companies are patent because they don't know the unknown yet?
I can ask.
Some people call them Obamacare.
The other thing could be, I don't know how much usage we like, usage we had last year. A lot of times it'll go up just because of that. If you had somebody that had a big surgery, or, you know, was sick a lot, or something like that, that matters to me, ours go up all the time anyway.
I don't recall, and you wouldn't have any agent who's just off the top of my head when I'm on the phone.
Then it's just the company going up then, isn't it?
Have we checked with all the insurance carriers that we could do business with to see what rates would be?
Ms. Pam has done a lot of legwork on this, and I might add that part of Rhonda's job, we're paying a fee to Ms. Rhonda to do that, her position as a consultant is to go out and check multiple companies to get us our best rate. So, with her having done that, and Ms. Pam going out on her own and contacting other cities, and KMU, and things like that, we've done a tremendous amount of research into that, so.
I think it'd be a great opportunity for you later in the week at your meeting in Dodge City during network time to find out what other cities are doing, or what their rates are doing and how they're approaching it. Kind of get from other administrators, maybe you'd have a little idea without making a whole bunch of phone calls, because there's, I always have coffee break times and things like that. There might even be a breakout session on health insurance. I don't know that, but. I see that as a goal and opportunity for you to do some finding out from just...
See where others are doing.
So, I'm hearing still some questions that need answered from what the council's discussed. Counsel, is that what I, am I hearing you all right, as far as what plan can we mix and match a little of option B and C, or A and C, or B and A, or whatever? I get a consensus that the direction is that we as the city need to contribute more to the increase, or to the increase, not just put it all on the employee, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
I understand.
So, you, since you had a consideration for action on that, do we need a motion just to table it? Or is it just a consideration?
They need a motion or just consensus to table?
Yeah, you didn't have a specific proposal, so I think...
It's just informational item. Okay. Direction enough for you, Ed, on that?
Certainly. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel, for your input. Also, next on the agenda is a letter from Mike Gurney, zoning and planning and zoning on a conditional use application that they had, and then the planning commission has made their recommendation. Input from staff?
Well, counsel, I think the letter describes to you here that the planning commission did hold a public hearing on this, and it's the consensus from the planning commission that they recommend that council disapprove this conditional use permit for this mobile home facility, recreational park at Nebraska and Olive. Is there anything additional on that, Chrissy?
I will say there was quite an public outcry to deny that application, and quite a few neighbors showed up with some very serious concerns over safety and other conditions in that area should that park develop. And so the planning commission took that into consideration and felt this was the best decision to offer to you.
And counsel, I don't think it was the concept that they were, the public was disagreeing with, I think it was just primarily the location, with the local residents there who objected to this.
And there are spots in the city limit, am I correct or not, that are zoned specifically for these already?
Yes, but with the passage of some regulations for planned unit developments, it allowed for temporary parks, and there's a clause in there that with a little misleading, it didn't say in R1B, or, yeah, R1B zoning only. So it kind of left it open that it could be in the south side of town, so it allowed it to be considered, but when it came down to it, they didn't build it that location because it's a developed residential area.
So that's true, with anything south of the highway, basically in a residential area, if there is already trailer hookups, that will probably not be, this sets the precedent that there will not be a temporary R1B.
There will not be additional parks developed, is kind of their theory.
Okay, as long as there's consistency.
Yeah. That was pointed out, that there's already units available that are not full. There's already hookups on the south side of town that are, there's one trailer there right now. And Monica Hayes was also here for that meeting, and she said that she had some openings in her park also, they asked, specifically asked her that. And so they felt that there's adequate, the PUD was allowing for temporary setup because of the need for workforce. The need isn't there right now, was their theory, because there's so many open spots right now.
Other questions or comments on this issue? So the council has a choice whether to accept the recommendation by motion of the planning commission, or to reject it and send it back to the planning commission.
Okay, so the one person that's there, they don't have to, they're okay to stay there?
That's a different location, but yes, that park is okay to stay there for now.
Okay.
This just pertains to the...
I'd make a motion that we accept the planning commission's recommendation to deny the request.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, any other discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried. Item D, business item D, I'll turn this over to Mr. Truba.
Mr. Mayor, counsel, it's the first opportunity I've had to put a table in my agenda memo, but I think it breaks out nicely the various requests from our nonprofit or 501(c)(3) organizations here in town, who are submitting their request for a portion of what's been made available previously by council for assisting nonprofit organizations. The 2013 budget has an amount approved for assisting these organizations in the amount of $15,000. However, as you'll notice there, we have a, an aggregate request for approximately nearly $23,000. And hopefully you've had a chance to look at the various requests, but even if, on an average of 3,000 apiece for the five requests, would get us up to the 15,000. We have some fairly large requests here, and maybe it's, quite frankly, that their request has been submitted because they had no idea how much they could ask for or be granted. So I would suggest that council consider maybe some different options. For example, if the merit is there on each one of these requests, to give a like amount to each one, with the exception of the Kiowa County Veterans Memorial, who is asking for less than what would be an average for 3,000 per request.
Well, if you gave the Veterans Memorial the 2,000, you could give everybody else 3,250.
Exactly.
And that would delete your $15,000 fund in the budget.
I would have to ask this question first, I haven't had the opportunity to ask you this. Did all five applications meet the criteria of the grant program?
They've submitted documentation to show that they have 501(c)(3) status. The way the letter was written, it announced that grant funding could be available, and it asked for annual budgets for each organization, as well as a project budget, to show the council exactly what the money would be used for. And I think, for the most part, most of these organizations have met that. To exactly break out and to tell council exactly where the funding would be used, the one that comes to mind that isn't project-related is Greentown, and their request is simply to assist them in funding operational expenses, which is somewhat contrary to what the original letter had asked for. We have two organizations here tonight, we have Greentown and the R-Side.
Any input from either of the representatives from those two organizations that is information we don't have in the packet?
Yeah, I'd just like to say that the amount that we're requesting for the operational fees is simply to that we can direct more of our attention towards our larger projects, because the sort of money that we're looking for is not the amount of money that the city can provide for us. So, we're having to spend a lot of our time focusing on acquiring larger sums of the money than the city can provide. So that would simply help us focus on these longer-term goals and projects.
Thank you. I'd like contributions to deciding on a percentage of increase for health insurance.
Yeah.
I mean, in the aspect of what's fair.
I guess I'm inclined to go with Mark's suggestion, and I'd go 2,000 for the Veterans Memorial, and 3,250 for the remaining applicants.
So that's giving one of the five everything they asked for?
But they also asked for the least. More within our means.
Just point of discussion.
I think it's fair to say that these are all valuable assets to our community, and I hope that maybe next year, when we look at the budget, maybe we can increase, you know, our grant line item a little bit more. I don't think they're asking for anything that's out of line, and what they're contributing to us is definitely beneficial, too.
Just a thought, would it make sense to change your scheduling of these requests so that the requests could be made in connection with the budgeting?
Yes.
Even that they would make a request by July 1, even though it's not going to happen until... And then you put that in the budget, for consideration for the budget, be it the council.
It'll allow us to budget more in line with what the actual need is, not just kind of a guess of, let's subside X amount of dollars.
I always thought our process was on this, was establishing to encourage not only tourism and help fund programs that would entice people to just keep coming to the community. As Erica said, there's no question that we'd like to help all of them, everybody, but at some point in time, how much can the city, without raising taxes, do? I guess that's where I would cite with councilman resigning butler, sometimes we just can't keep doing everything. How can we do more with less? We hear that already everywhere. So discussion on what Mark and Matt were just talking about, Erica or safety?
That sounds reasonable to me.
I agree.
I would make a motion that we approve the grant applications in the amounts of $2,000 for the Kiowa County Veterans Memorial, and $3,250 for the remaining four applicants.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, any other discussion? That does add up to 15.
Close enough, I think.
Yeah, that's how we offer our budget.
Mark's math sounded right to me.
You might want to check that, just to make sure, though.
He's adding.
Yeah, it's 15,000.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried. Thank you, ladies, for being here. And your time put that in, and I really would encourage what Gordon just mentioned.
It's a good idea.
Is that we have before us a definite plan on a grant program, and to get maybe with those that are applying and say, hey, is there misunderstandings in our guidelines, whatever, and have something very set that's due six months before the funding would be July 1. And then the council, through, with administration's recommendation, could decide at that point what to put in the next year's 2014 budget.
I think if council is okay with that, I can receive that guidance, and we can include that in this next year's budget process, and we can send out letters and communications to our nonprofit organizations to get them on board with that. I think that should work fine.
Sounds great. Also in front of you, counsel, is business park lease between the city of Greensburg and L.E. Myers Company. As a reminder, that's the company that is the sub to construct the transmission line from Medicine Lodge, the Thistle Substation to Spearville. Any questions on that lease agreement? Ed and Mick met with Brian, representative of L.E. Myers, and covered a lot of this. Gordon worked on the lease. We got it, Ed got it to Brian, and L.E. Myers Company has reviewed it and is okay with the verage. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And would the lease start with approval of it?
Yes.
I would make a motion that we accept this, or, let me put that in a different word here. I would make a motion that we accept the lease agreement with L.E. Myers Company.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried. As administration has informed us, we have some resignations and some needs to fill positions. We also, in the next three agenda items, we also have some reappointments that need to be made as their term expires. We'll start with item F. We have three terms to expire on December 31 of this year, correct?
Yes.
And we need Haley Kern, Sue Greenleaf Taylor, and Janine Haspin have agreed to serve again for a term that would expire on December thirty-first of two thousand and fifteen, which would be another four-year term, correct?
Three-year term.
Three-year term. Is that?
Yeah.
And they're all willing to serve again?
That's correct. Christie has contacted each one of them personally and they've agreed to serve yet again.
So, we need to, I need to make a motion then to reappoint Haley Kern, Sue Greenleaf Taylor, and Janine Haspin to the Convention and Tourism Board with terms to expire December thirty-first of two thousand and fifteen.
Second.
They're moving seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Also yearly, we have an appointment of a city council member to the Convention and Tourism Board. And is that yearly or is that three-year?
I believe it's annually.
I thought it was annually.
It hasn't been in the past.
It's three-year on her also for this one. Is what our government says.
Okay, well, why I'm asking, when's your term expiring, council?
Year and a half.
See, that's, I'm just, and I'm not saying you won't run again and be reelected. But I thought we were doing it by the year.
On most committees it is, but on this one it's.
The housing authority is the same way.
And I think that may be statutory, but I'm not sure.
Okay, then the easiest, then if whoever we appoint would resign or choose not to run again, we'd have a vacancy, correct?
Fill the vacancy.
And Erica, are you still interested in being on that?
Yes.
I would make a motion that we reappoint Councilwoman Goodman to the Convention and Tourism Board.
It's been moved and seconded. All those, any other discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Due to item H, due to the resignation of Mary Versett, we have an unexpired term to fill through April thirtieth of two thousand and fourteen. Administration staff have contacted three people there in front of you unless you have other names that you've contacted.
We contacted far more than these.
Yeah.
These were willing.
These are the only three that accepted.
These were the only ones who were willing.
I would, well, would. Scott is pretty well, to me, informed, kind of the way town is put together and everything, has been here. He does a lot of work around here, knows. In my opinion, I would like to see Scott on it.
I think all three are fine candidates, but I wouldn't object to Scott, so.
Yeah, I certainly wouldn't object to Scott, but I was really excited to see Stephanie White's name there.
Well, me too.
Because I haven't seen her name come up in anything.
She's younger and it's nice to get somebody younger involved, too.
But yeah, we're not going to go wrong with any of the three.
Well, just keep in mind that no matter who we nominate for this commission, we're still one short on the housing authority, so maybe one of the other two.
Well, Jill served on housing.
That's true.
She's not willing.
She is not interested.
What about Stephanie?
It's got me a little too much.
Well, we've had, in going through these names, we put both boards out there. Are you interested in either or? And it seemed like everyone was jumping on the bandwagon that wanted to for the Planning Commission. Very few takers on the housing. However, Christie has confirmed today that we have an appointment. I just didn't want to add or change yet another topic on the agenda for this evening. So, we'll be ready to name that.
At our next meeting?
At our next meeting.
Okay.
So, that should fill that out.
Well, whoever the council chooses to appoint, keep these names in your head. You have people that are
Interested.
Willing to serve in many ways with the city.
I would make a motion that we appoint Scott Eller to the Planning Commission to fill the unexpired term to expire April thirtieth of two thousand and fourteen.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Other discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Terry Mayhew, item aye, has agreed to serve another term on the Greensburg Housing Authority. So, we would need to reappoint him if you desire to. You all know who Terry is, okay?
I would move that we reappoint Terry Mayhew to the Public Housing Authority.
I'll second.
They're moving seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Christie and Ed, I would request a new updated list now as soon as maybe the next meeting's over, when we get everything appointed with the expiring terms. You've been very good at providing us that, but that way we don't let some appointments slip and have an expired term serving in a position voting.
That's nice to stay on top of the days.
My intention was after the first of the year. So, you had to do a brand new list.
Okay.
Ed, didn't you mention that you had another name for the housing authority? Because even after Mr. Mayhew, we're still one short.
That's correct. We'll have that ready for council.
Oh, next meeting?
Next meeting.
Okay.
And there, which is very timely, their meeting, I think, what'd you say, the twenty-first? The meeting follows closely after that, so we'll, should be able to take care of that. This is, I think this is going to be a good candidate for that position.
Moving on to item J. Ed or Gordon, do you want to explain why we're having to repeal an ordinance?
Well, apparently what happened, that when ten twenty-five was written, it contained errors in the legal description. And so, that it did not accomplish the intended purpose. It was vacating things that we didn't own or have a right to vacate, and so it had to be corrected. And looking at, rather than amending it, I mean, the way I read it, I mean, the way I looked at that was that if we adopted an ordinance doing something like that, it was void and of no effect to begin with because we never had any power to do anything with those properties because it hadn't gone through the Planning Commission or anything else. So, and also that ordinance had been recorded, meaning at the registered deeds office. So, as a person that does a lot of title review and things like that, I know what happens when you get those kind of things. If you see that ordinance indexed to those legal descriptions, you have to have something of record that's going to clarify that. And if you just do another ordinance with a different legal description, it's not going to do it. So, I just thought the easiest thing is just to repeal this one and do a new one with the right legal. And then that, both of them will be recorded again.
Questions for Gordon then on the, we're going to, on the next two agenda items. This way, it's official in the minutes and official at the registered deeds office.
Do we have to do it all in one? Can we do it in one motion or just?
No, we need two motions. You've got to repeal first. J, and then we'll handle K next.
I would make a motion that we adopt ordinance number ten twenty-nine.
Second.
Well, first, we've got to repeal ordinance ten twenty-five.
Oh, it's. Ordinance ten twenty-nine does recuse.
It does, it does.
Yeah, we've got to give it a number.
I see ten thirty's the next one. I've got an eye point that hit her off. It's been moved and seconded. Did you get that, Christie? It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Roll call vote since it's a repeal of an ordinance, Councilman. Goodman?
Yes.
Youngman?
Yes.
Trummel?
Yes.
McChriscusson?
Yes.
Thank you. Any questions then on business item K?
I would make a motion that we adopt ordinance number ten thirty.
Second.
They're moving seconded. Any other discussion? Roll call vote. Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Trummel?
Yes.
Youngman?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Motion carried. Ed, is this the time that you requested executive session for fifteen minutes or how long do you need?
I think fifteen minutes.
Okay, for non-elected.
For matters of non-elected personnel.
I'd make a motion we go into executive session for non-elected person till, personnel till seven twenty-five.
Second. They're moving seconded. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Exactly, something's going on my watch. Okay, so as far as item, action item, or business item L, we've taken care of that, correct?
No action by council.
No action by council, yeah. It's just, that was just an informational item. So, we do not need a special meeting next Monday, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. That really helps me.
December is a busy month.
The next item on the agenda is December twenty-fourth, Christmas Eve, which is on a Monday, correct?
It's on a Monday.
Surprised we didn't make that a holiday outright.
Now, my other question, so I could follow up, we can follow up on this. Does December thirty-first have the same issue?
December thirty-first has the same exact issue. If I may, Mr. Mayor, council, I've received a tremendous amount of emails based on the question of, hey, what's your city doing about this particular holiday? The responses are all over the board, rating from nothing, it's a workday, to many cities having given off the Christmas Eve completely and half a day, depending on the city. Some giving both Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve. I took it upon myself to put it on the agenda to ask council if we would consider that. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't suggest that we address this from the viewpoint of adding it to the policy manual and making it an annual event. I think, based on the tempo of operations, based on the needs of the city at that time, I would like, in the future, if council could consider that each year. I may reveal myself to be an idiot here, but I'm not sure Christmas Eve's going to be on a Monday every year. It may be on a Wednesday.
Could be on a Sunday.
Might be on a Sunday, in which case it's academic. My goal is to ask council to consider a half a day or all day on Christmas Eve. Take no action or consideration for New Year's Eve. I don't believe it's as necessary in this case. I think that's a holiday where, as long as you're with your family at midnight that night, you're in a good position on New Year's Eve. For Christmas Eve, however, giving a half a day or I would even suggest the entire day because I'm not sure much productive work will be done in a four-hour period. I would ask that we consider whatever council would choose to approve, half a day or all day, so that for those families who will travel during that time, they have plenty of leave time to get to grandma's house, even if it's over the river and through the woods. They'll have Saturday, Sunday, and Monday, for example, to get there.
When you say city offices there, I presume you mean all city employees?
All city employees.
Okay.
On-call would still be available. Someone will have to be.
Does that mean the big well, too?
That would mean the big well.
Closing on Christmas Eve or at?
I think.
Or is that left to the?
The manager.
The manager and the administration to decide that. I'm just an opinion, real quick, if you're going to give a half a day, just we'll give you a whole day because it, an employee's going to say, hey, I can just use four hours of annual leave because I ain't going in that day. We're still having people on-call, though.
That's correct.
Through the holidays, on the utilities, correct?
That's, that's correct.
I mean, they're still on-call whether they're at the shop or at home.
Yeah, I have no objection to giving a full day's off for both of those dates. I, personally, as a merchant, I will be open on Monday because I know that there will be people traveling. And I would be fine just leaving that decision up to the big well manager, whether to be open or not.
As I said, I was kind of surprised we didn't make that a holiday when we were establishing the holidays for the full year, so.
Oh, you're looking with a full on.
Yeah, I guess I kind of agree with Erica. Let's just go ahead and do full, the full day.
I agree with that.
I think that's just one of the perks we can offer. It isn't much. That's all.
Do we need to make a motion?
Now, when you talk, Erica mentioned both days. Were you thinking New Year's Eve, too?
Please discuss that, council. I didn't view New Year's Eve as important for family events as the Christmas Eve. Please, I mean, if you.
Well, I just know some families are split between different sides of the family and they do Christmas at one and New Year's at the other. And have Christmas on New Year's or, I suppose. I mean, that happens some, too. So, that's just part.
What do you think, Erica?
Well, I, yeah, I'm for giving them four-day weekend for both weekends. It's, yeah. Four-day weekend is nice to have.
Again, yeah, sure. I'll be a pushover. Somebody has to.
Who wants to be the Grinch?
I'll be a little bit of a Grinch, in a way. I support what the council says, but you know, in the job I had for all those years, if you wanted Christmas Eve off, you took annual leave.
I guess that's kind of my thoughts is, you know, New Year's Eve is.
It's twenty-twelve.
Chances are, if you go to some of the New Year's Eve, it's a party of some sort, and if you really want to go, you can take a vacation day. Whereas a lot of family activities on Christmas, so I guess if I was a preference, I would say full day New Year's Eve and then just, or sorry, full day Christmas Eve and work as scheduled for New Year's Eve. Compromise.
It doesn't matter to me. If they want to take that New Year's Eve day off, then they can take it as a holiday. Can they? I mean, can they use it as a, or a vacation day? Okay. I don't know.
Not all of us at the same time, but yes.
Yes, oh, yeah, okay, okay. I'm just asking.
Hopefully, you're not all going to the same party.
I don't, honestly, it doesn't matter to me, but I guess.
Well, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that we give the city employees off Monday, the twenty-fourth and Monday, the thirty-first.
Of December.
Of December.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed?
Mark is kind of like.
I've never had a job that offered this many days off, so it's hard for me to fathom.
I work six days a week, too, so.
When you, when you have your own businesses.
It's not always been my own business either, Gordon. I mean, you worked a full day on Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve was just another day.
To the staff, then, all the employees. This is over and above the normal holiday. This is, this is.
And next year, it won't be, you know, a lot of people doing it, next year, it'll be Tuesday, Wednesday, instead of Monday, Tuesday. And so, it gets to be a little more difficult to try to make that a long weekend.
Long weekend, yeah.
Then you work those days. Usually, they, most people have them, work them.
Gordon, did you find anything out?
You know, and. You know, and with this caveat, this statute book is 11 years old and they make a lot of changes, but I don't know if it's, they probably haven't changed this, but what this says is this, "In the case of vacancy in the council occurring by reason of resignation, death, or removal on the city, the mayor, by and with consent, advising consent of the remaining council members, shall appoint a lecturer to fill the vacancy until the next election." And it doesn't, it doesn't talk anywhere in here about what form of resignation is necessary. And so, I would guess that this would qualify as being adequate if people relied upon that and went forward and did something else. I mean, so.
So, it sounds like.
Not that you're ready to do anything tonight because nobody expected this tonight, but I'm saying you could start planning or getting, getting ready for.
Would you suggest there be a motion to accept the resignation or just move on?
I would just move on. I mean, I think, because it's like, you know, there's no slavery. I mean, you could say, you could vote against accepting it, and that wouldn't put him back in office. I don't think you have to do anything to make that effective.
Is there anything else to come before us tonight? If not, I can clear the meeting again. Thank you, council.